Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Selectmen meeting for November 30th, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. Can I please have everybody stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, first thing on our agenda is the fire chief report. Chief Lavoy, welcome tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I am Lavoy, Fire Chief in Warren. Thank you for having me in tonight. Just wanted to give a brief summarization of our activities during the month of October of 2023. I responded to 41 total fire incidents, which included nine motor vehicle accidents, four medical assists, one structural fire, 10 activated alarms, one carbon dioxide call, two investigations, two power line incidents, one illegal burn. We had two calls that were canceled for, they were, they were false calls, as we call them sometimes. One gas emergency, one service call, one good intent call, one cooking or cooking fire incident, one chimney fire, one electrical equipment issue, and one extrication/rescue. We responded to 59 ambulance calls between, in October of 2023, and 11 ALS intercepts were required for those calls. Did a few inspections, included three smoking carbon dioxide inspections. Those are the ones we do when there's a sale or transfer of property in town that we're required to do by Massachusetts law. A couple of oil burner inspections. Warren EMS trained on multiple skills, including airway protocols and interventions, as well as check and inject medications that we give on the ambulance. And Warren Fire Personnel did some evolutions on truck equipment, different specialized pieces of equipment that we have on the trucks. They go through them from time to time, especially when the cold weather starts to come and we're kind of limited to being indoors. We kind of do a lot of in-house stuff at the station itself. Most of our scheduled apparatus preventative maintenance has been done at this point. You know, about halfway through my budget on that, but all the major stuff has been done. I did have to buy some, a decent amount of tires for a couple of vehicles in the very beginning of the fiscal year, so, but I don't, hopefully everything stays where it is. We have a few other things we're going to do towards the end of the fiscal year, but we're kind of status quo on at least all of the major stuff, all of our oil changes and preventative stuff, where all of, all the apparatus is, is done. And the nice part is, we took delivery of the truck we've been waiting for, for quite a while. It's not in service yet. We expect to have it in service probably by the end of December. We're all training on it right now. We're outfitting it, putting it all, putting it all together, and, but I think it'll be good to go in about a month, so.
Very good.
Lot of stuff we're working on. Any questions? Do you have any questions?
No. Good.
Good job, Chief. Thank you. All right. And you're still staying up there because you're the next thing on the agenda, too. Discussion approval of the first quarter FY24 ambulance abatements, anticipated vote.
So, we do this quarterly. It's something we're required to do, to do write-offs on monies that cannot be collected for legality purposes, for, you know, different insurances, whether it's Medicare, Medicare, Mass Health. We're only allowed to collect a certain percentage of the overall bill that we, that we submit in there. So, in order to have the books balanced right and everything to come out in the end, we're required to do an abatement on the rest of those bills. So, this is a monthly total. It all depends on how many, how many calls we do. It all depends on how many, you know, the calls the billing company happens to bill out and process during a month, you know, during that quarter and everything. So, the numbers are always going to change, but, I mean, unfortunately, this is the same that every other community and every other private EMS service or municipal EMS service has to do at some point, you know, throughout the year.
Okay. Just seems like a lot of money.
It, it is. It is. I mean, like I said, when you're talking about, it, it just, I mean, if your average ambulance bill is about $2,000 and you're only collect, you're legally allowed to collect 250 of that or 300 of that, the rest of that amount adds up. And if you're doing, you know, a thousand calls a year, you know what I mean? It just, it's a lot over time. I mean, we do collect anywhere from, you know, $300,000 to $350,000 a year worth of revenue into the town for that. So, I mean, that certainly does help and pretty much, while we don't see it on the Fire Department, so to speak, goes back to the general fund, it does help to support the full-time staff that we have and basically covers their salaries and whatnot if you look at it at the end of the day. So, we do take in money, but we certainly have to write off money. It's not a, it's not a perfect system, unfortunately, because, you know, a lot of, you know, the residents that we take and, and stuff, they don't have, you know, a lot of them are on Mass Health, Medicare, Medicaid. It's not a, you know, if you get an insurance like Blue Cross or, or, you know, some of the other big ones, they may pay the full amount, you know, but they, you know, the subsidized ones, they're not legally allowed to do that, so.
Just sad to always see this amount, just.
Yeah, yeah.
Get washed away. You know, it'd be nice to be, for it to be coming back into, you know, the ambulance service and, you know, pay for maybe another guy or two.
No, I believe me, I wish, I wish it was different and the regulations were different, but, you know, these are, these are primarily your subsidized, you know, insurance carriers that, you know, account for this kind of thing, so.
Just saying. Nothing, nothing with the Fire Department is cheap.
Yeah, no, I mean, like I said.
Everything is expensive over there.
You know, that's where the, we try to keep our collection rates, you know, you know, kind of where everyone else is. You know, we don't want to be super high, we don't want to be super low. You know, we have to take into effect, there are some, you know, companies out there that bill more than us, there's some that bill less than us, but, you know, I feel comfortable where we are at the moment, only because, again, it's, it's very hard to send someone that's already struggling a very large bill. And if they're going to have to pay for it out of pocket, you got to realize those are those calls that some people, you know, especially elderly or disabled, they may make the decision to pay the ambulance bill and not eat, you know, and that's not something we want to look, see either. So, you know, we do have hardship cases where from time to time, if someone does get a bill and they can't pay it, we certainly will look at, you know, a reason before that and they can enter into a, you know, a program to pay it over time. So, there are things out there that we do. We're not, we're not here to, we're not here to crush, you know, crush people over taking a ride with us on the ambulance. However, you know, we are here to collect as much as we can legally to do that, so.
Very good, Chief. Thank you. Thank you. You have any questions about it?
No. It is what it is.
No questions either. It is what it is, so we will vote.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the ambulance abatement for first quarter FY24.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Next thing on the agenda is discussion on the Commonwealth of Mass Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, ABCC, decision on liquor to a minor for Whiskey Hill Liquors, Countryside Pub, Warren Package Store, and Glenda's Pub, anticipated vote. So, what's going on here?
I got an email from the ABCC saying that they did a test on these four and they, each one of them gave liquor to a minor.
Oh, boy.
So, they did an investigation and they're decided to just do a warning. And I asked him, I said, "Do you need me to tell our guys before you make your decision?" And he said, they said, "No. The Selectmen don't need to know until after we make our decision."
So, they did, their decision was to give them each a warning?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Well, that doesn't give me any confidence because we're the ones signing these and approving these licenses, so.
That's why I didn't do the file report.
And if the ABCC has caught them, it's probably because it's common practice for them, so.
Well, I guess the person that they caught them with was 20 and a half.
Still under age?
They didn't ask for ID.
Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah. We should be carding everybody. All right.
And I have not given out any licenses.
So, what do you think about having these four establishments come in? Because if they're doing that, I'd like, I'd like to know what they're doing to, to mitigate that risk.
Okay.
What do you think, Rich?
Maybe, so I'm looking at, so Whiskey Hill had no prior, Countryside had no prior, Warren Package Store had one prior. It's under the findings of fact. And let's see what the fourth one had. Glenda's with no prior.
You know, I don't know. But that could be just because this is the area they decided to hit on right now.
Yeah.
You know, because they don't have enough, they don't have a lot of staff doing this all the time.
So, um, yeah, I'm fine with whatever. I mean, I would say for sure Warren Package Store, they've already had one, two.
Well, that's one we should focus on, but I think all, all of them should come in if they want their liquor license approved by us.
All right.
I'd like to know what they're doing to mitigate that this doesn't happen again.
Where do the liquor license go? Calendar here?
Oh, yes, it does. I'm sorry. Well, theirs isn't actually physically up until the 31st.
December, okay. All right.
Good with that?
Yeah.
Call them?
Yeah.
Because to let them know that we're watching, and if they want to continue business within the community, they better stop playing by the rules because we're seeing this, too. If they're, if they're dinging that one on this and they've served alcohol to minors, that is unacceptable in this community. And, you know, it could, accidents can happen. Sometimes kids look a little older, but that's why you card people, so.
So, what authority do we have? They're issuing a warning. Do we, can we only follow what they do or can we do something else?
You can't go above what they're, you know.
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing anything. We're just more of an inquiry, what are you doing to, to make sure this doesn't happen again?
Well, I guess my, so the question is, if they were going to get their license suspended, do we do that or does the AB?
Well, they wouldn't even allow us to issue it.
Yeah. ABCC would suspend it and we'd get immediate notice.
Because sometimes they spend it for like a week.
They could, or a day, or?
Yeah, a day, yeah, yeah. A small thing to start with. But we can never do that. Is that right?
Well, we don't have to issue the license because it's coming through us.
Well, but I mean, if we've already, say this is March now, they've had their license for three months.
Yeah.
Do we have any power to shut them down for a day or?
For what reason?
For this?
No, because they, they would do the investigation. The ABCC would come in.
Okay.
And we would just notify them and say, "Hey, we feel that, you know, there's some juveniles being served there," because we don't have legal authority to do that. And they would actually set up a, a sting based on complaints from the community or the town.
Okay.
And they would go in there and try to purchase alcohol with a minor.
So, the only power we have is to not renew the license?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. That's, yeah, all right. Well, so we have that power for a month?
Yeah, and for that month, I want to know.
Yeah.
Because this happened, what days did they happen?
Well, there's a Tuesday.
There's a Tuesday, April 25th?
I think it's all the same day.
It is.
Okay. So, all, all the same day, they went to the same establishments, probably with the same kid.
Yeah.
And got them all.
They went pretty quick, too.
And that's, and how many do we have in our community? If they grabbed four out of our community?
We have.
A bunch of liquor stores, right?
Let's see, we have four, two, four, six, eight, half.
So, oh, half of our.
Yeah.
That's bad. That's 50%.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah, I'd say call them in here, let them know we want to have a meeting with them and, and if they say we're not going to do that, then you just don't give them their license. So, they come see us. This, this is, it's not going to happen in our community. They need to take it serious.
Can we send letters to the others and say, "You should be on your best behavior" and be carding people and?
Oh, it's going to get around.
Yeah, okay.
Because they all talk.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Well, certainly.
And, and to be honest, I don't, it's not up to us to say, "Be on your best behavior." You know, because they should be doing that anyway. And I don't want to.
Yeah.
And for the ones that probably had somebody go in there and didn't get served, I don't want to, I don't want to criticize them in any way or penalize them, you know, they did the right thing. They did what they're supposed to do. So, but yeah. Great.
So, we'll table that until next meeting.
Yep.
Well, there's nothing to table.
I mean, not table.
Because we don't have to accept this. I mean, it is what it is.
Well, we.
I mean, what are we accepting?
We're not accepting anything. They notified us that.
Yeah.
Four establishments out of eight got grabbed for serving minors.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Chief.
I just wanted to let the board know that I did complete the inspections as of today. I have been to all of the bars in town, so there's, two of them are, are fine. I didn't find any issues with Glenda's Pub and the Polish Club. There's a couple of minor things I'm following up with, with the Countryside and the Eagles Club. So, they're relatively minor stuff, just something out of date or something like that. You know, all the emergency lighting is working, all that stuff, but I did complete those inspections. I will follow up with them in the next coming weeks before the board makes a decision, just so you know that I have been there.
So, Countryside's having some issues?
Eh, nothing major. There was, there was, they, they had, I think it was one, an issue with the door lock or something that they were going to change out and switch out. And there was issues with an extinguisher company coming in and tagging out the extinguishers at the Eagles. So, they're supposed to call them, have them come in and do those couple of things, and I'll go back and do a re-inspect on it.
Okay.
I have those licenses on hold until I get the okay from you.
Okay, yeah. You can go ahead, I mean, well, you're dealing with this, too, so that's fine. I mean, but on my side, if you want to just make a note that right now Glenda's Pub is okay and, and the Polish Club has been cleared of any safety violations, so, okay, on my side of things.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, when, can you do a letter, then? Can you do a letter and send us a draft?
I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay. And I would say we get these out as soon as we can.
Yeah. I'd like to have them in for next meeting.
Yeah.
That's on the.
Seventh?
Seventh?
You're in December.
The seventh, yep.
I figured you'd.
You're here December, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're here the seventh? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so put it on the agenda for the seventh.
Will you?
All right, yeah.
Go ahead.
You might have to run that meeting with me. Oh, okay. All right. Very good. All right, so it was nice of them to let us know. Thank you. Do you have any more questions?
No.
Was there anything else about that? All right.
I think on the next one, though, the renewal certification, we'll hold off on until you meet with them.
Yeah, yeah, those, those four businesses don't give them anything until we meet with them, after we meet with them.
And we won't fill out this sheet because down here it says, you have the license disapproved by the city or town. So, until we meet with them, we'll keep this.
Yeah, I want to see what they, what they've done. And, you know, we can put that in the letter. We, we want to know what was done to make sure this doesn't happen again within the community, you know? I don't want to be known as the town that's been serving minors and they could just come and go and, yeah. No, shut that right down. All right. So, next thing on the agenda. Assessors asked to inform the public of changes made at the town meeting on Article 31, the increase of the exemption from 43750 to 500. In Article 32, age change to 65. Gross limit is 16,500 for single and 22,500 for married. So, those are the changes to the exemptions for Article 31 and 32 from the assessors.
And the assets? I left that one off, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's no assets on there.
Yeah, assets, it's on your sheet if you turn the page. Should be number.
Okay, asset limits are single resident increase from 28,000 to 34,000. And married joint residence increase from 30,000 to 42,500. So, those are your changes. And then it changes, the age changes to 65, where it used to be 70. I probably should have gone to that for more detail. My mistake. Okay, so next thing on the agenda, review and discuss, discuss updated job description for the position of town accountant, anticipated vote. Okay, Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Before you, this evening is a updated job description for the position of town accountant. As you know, our town accountant will be leaving us on December 7th, and we're looking to get this position advertised with an updated job description attached.
Okay. I didn't see any issues with it before, did you?
So, I have two questions. Do you want to put something about Vedar on here? Because we have it and it's not going away.
Yeah.
So, it would probably be preferable if they.
Under special requirements?
Okay.
Preferred knowledge of Vedar.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Oh, he's got it, yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing is Tammy's a procurement officer or no?
She was the chief procurement officer.
But that's you now.
And that's me now, yeah.
So, you did have something about procurement in here.
Yeah, so she still maintains procurement files in the accountant's office.
Okay.
So, you know, that could help out, you know, with maintaining the files and keeping them in, in a central location.
Do we need a backup procurement officer or?
Well, we do have Chief Lavoy as part of his certification to be, to become chief. There's a, there's an opportunity for him to learn some of the procurement side of things. And the state has this year awarded the, each community a one free pass for anybody in the community that's in town government that would be beneficial to them to learn procurement. And he had mentioned to me in the past that it was part of his certification to become chief. He could get credentialing credits, so, I don't know, Chief, if you want to speak on that?
So, I'm a credential fire chief in the state of Massachusetts, and there's a re-credentling process that happens every three years. I have to obtain 72 reoccurring credits in order to stay a credential fire chief in Massachusetts. And it's a variety of different courses. They, they've expanded it a lot, and one of the big pushes of, of the program now is, you know, both fire, police chiefs, administrators in general, they want them to have as much vast knowledge as possible for the position. And one of the biggest, I think, hangups, hangups that some people run into is, in municipal government, is the procurement process. And they have heavily emphasized that this is a course that they're really looking for people to take. It's not mandatory, but I had mentioned it to Jim during an evaluation process, and I had said, you know, "This is the course I'm looking for." And then sure enough, they're giving credits, a pretty good amount of credits to be able to do this course because it's a course they're encouraging to, you know.
So, Chief, do you want to do the course?
So, I mean, yeah, I guess, you know, I mean, if, if, if.
What do you think?
Yeah.
If he wants to do it, I'm all for it.
I'm all for it.
You know, Jim's been through it. It's, it's a pretty expanded course, you know what I mean? It's going to take some time, but I think it's, it's valuable. And not only do I receive credits, but I think it would improve my college.
It helps you. It helps us.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have, you know, so, I mean, if that's something the board would entertain, then I would be, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Let's get him the course.
Okay. And it's going to be free?
Yeah.
So, this year, you know, as long as the chief signs up, it's free through the state. So, it's, that's a $2,000 value.
Very good.
He did send me the link. I didn't do anything with it yet only because I knew it was coming to the board. I wanted to make sure that was okay with the board. If they were okay, we'd be taking the course.
It's okay. Okay, let's get it done.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Chief. Making him worth more money now. He's going to have all this knowledge. That's good. Helps the town.
So, to answer Selectman Iarka's question, so, once with the chief is up and running, we'll have two people.
Okay. Yeah, that's good.
Resolve that situation right off the bat, huh?
Yeah.
All right. I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right, I'm good. Yep.
You know, the, the posting, what we're looking to, to do is to get it posted for like December 15th and run it to January 15th, so we can get, you know, you know, after the holidays, we're, we're anticipating that, you know, there's going to be, you know.
People aren't going to make moves before Christmas, so. After Christmas, they might be looking, so. All right. We need to do a motion on this and vote to approve it?
If you mind, yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the job description for the town accountant.
Okay, I'll second that. And all in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. You're all set, sir? Okay, next, next thing on the agenda is discussion of the hours and compensation plan for the assistant town accountant. Okay, so what's going on with this?
So, as you know, there's going to be a period of time in which we're going to need to have a town accountant. We have an assistant town accountant now. As you know, at the special town meeting, we put additional money in the line. It was approved to fund the assistant's position up until, you know, three to four months, we're anticipating of, of possibly, you know, once we do the interview process, get it advertised, do the, do the background checks, negotiate a contract, do the physical. We're anticipating it at about a three to four month window. The assistant town accountant has agreed to step up and to fill in on a temporary basis. She's, you know, she's, she's willing to, to do the daily functions of the office, the vendor warrants, the payroll warrants, doing all of the, the accounting for vacation time, sick time, leave, bank, making sure that all of the bills are, are properly paid in, in issuing out the reports. You know, she, she's anticipating that this could be anywhere between 25 to 30 hours a week. And currently, we are paying 30, almost $36 an hour. She would be willing to do it for 35.
Okay. Yes. Madeline's a wealth of knowledge, so she's always helped. Do you have any questions, Bill?
No, it's fine with me. No, it's fine with me.
I will have to, you know, I, I, I've learned a little bit of the system. Believe me, I'm not an accountant, okay?
You get too much on your table, you can't be the accountant, too.
Yeah. So I, you know, we are gonna have to reach out to try to do a, you know, some, some type of training for, you know, for, for Madeline, for the new system, the new software, the Vedar system. So we're gonna be working on, on getting that done probably relatively soon.
What's the overlap time, like a week between Tammy and...
Uh, no, it's, it's about, it's about, you know, it's about a day or so.
Oh, okay.
Well, Madeline's been working in the office this whole time, so she's familiar, she's just not familiar with Vedar.
Right, yeah.
So, we just gotta get her up on that one, so... Alright, I'm good. You good?
Yep.
Okay, let's do a motion.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve hiring the assistant town accountant at a rate of thirty-five dollars an hour on December eighth.
Alright, and hours? She wanted thirty hours?
Twenty-five to thirty, yeah.
Twenty-five to thirty hours? Okay, and I'll second that. All in favor?
Rich Iarka, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. You're all set, sir?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Acceptance of the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association Maya grant for cyber risk prevention in the amount of five thousand dollars. Anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I had mentioned before we met, before special town meeting, the town was a recipient of the Maya grant. We got the official paperwork just last week. And now it's just before you for the acceptance and acknowledgement of the grant.
This is for the firewall protection for highway, senior center, and sewer departments?
Yes.
Very good. Cyber security is important these days. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, sounds good.
Alright, let's do a motion.
Make a motion to accept the Maya grant for cybersecurity for five thousand dollars.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Rich Iarka, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next thing on the agenda. Review and possible sign, or review and possibly sign a contract between the town and Precise Paving Inc. for paving work. Anticipated vote. Isn't this a highway thing?
Yes, yep. So this is a...
Where's Jeremy?
I met with him. He just needed to, to get it signed. This is a, this is part of his Chapter ninety money that went out to bid in September. We're getting the process of getting the contracts together, getting them signed by town council, the accountant, by the vendor, and ultimately by the selectmen. The contract has been approved to form to council. The performance bonds are attached as well as the payment bond. And this is for work, HMA handwork, HMA sidewalk overlay, and HMA shimmying and leveling, as well as for triaxle dump truck rentals. There will be a series of these contracts that come before the board for various road materials for Chapter ninety funds as they are finally contracted.
So, sorry, this is for, is it for a specific project or it's just to cover him for...
To cover him for the year.
For the year, okay, alright. So we're essentially, it's a, we're getting a fixed price contract, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is this your contract?
Oh.
Me?
No?
No.
No, this is someplace in Brentfield. Precise paving.
Mm-hmm.
This is the one he uses all the time, right?
I believe he's used this in the past, yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir? He has the bonds, he has everything.
Yeah.
Alright. Do a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the contract with precise paving.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Rich Iarka, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And do we have our copy to sign?
There's multiple pages, right?
No, just one.
Just that one.
Oh, okay.
Just that one for this select board?
Yeah, I thought I seen it a few times in there. Oh, there's one because it's signed and one's not.
Right.
It's the same thing, though. That's what we're looking at. The same page?
One is signed by the, I was waiting on a signature from town council.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four annual review of the town's IT provider, Northeast IT, with possible vote to sign new monthly IT service agreement. Anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you this evening is their annual review. Myself and Selectman Belize were on the call this year when they went over their, their annual report. You know, this, this is something that you may want to, to table, to look at a little bit further and to allow Selectman Belize to opine on this maybe next week. You know, so that you can just review it, look at it. I will say that by, by signing this, doesn't necessarily lock us in. And what I mean by that is that you have until May first, you have to give them at least a sixty-day notice if you're not gonna be planning on renewing with this provider. So if you, if you let them know that, you know...
Didn't we discuss that we were gonna put it out for bid and see if we can get somebody else to?
Yeah, I mean, there's a possibility we could do that, too, if that's, if that's the exact direction you wanna go in.
'Cause it is kind of expensive. They're expensive.
Well, we don't know if they're expensive, I guess, right? Until we ask around.
So we can get some bids and see how much it's gonna cost because this is a big chunk of our expenses here for running the municipal building.
Did it go up like a thousand a month? What's our previous?
Well, it's looking like that the, from, well, from last year to this year, it went up significantly because of endpoint detection and...
Which we have to have no matter who.
We have to have no matter what. For this year into next year, it looks like it's a modest increase of about a hundred and, hundred dollars, almost.
A hundred dollars.
Oh, current monthly plan, new monthly, yeah.
It went up a hundred dollars. A hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's twelve hundred bucks over the year. I mean, that's really...
Um, you know, there's...
But that's monthly. So it's three thou, it's gonna go to three thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars a month.
Right.
Just for internet services.
Yeah. Well, not in it, but...
Well, email.
All the computer, yeah, virus.
Service.
You know, there's, there's companies that are on the state bid list that I can certainly contact that, you know, I can, you know, get some ideas as to what, you know, what they would be charging us, you know?
So, I, I agree with you. Well, let's table this to the next meeting so we can get Mr. Belize's input on this also. 'Cause he's kind of a computer guru. And I know he was concerned about the price with it because he felt it was very expensive. So I, I, I wouldn't feel right approving something when he's not here to discuss it with us, too. So, are you good with that, table it to the next meeting?
Yeah.
So we'll table it to the next meeting.
So, and I'll just say, my experience with these guys has been that their customer service is pretty good. I'll just say that. So, we don't wanna get a situation where we, like, find somebody who's cheaper, but then it's impossible to get them on the phone or they charge for like every, every little thing, you know?
Cheaper isn't always better.
Yeah, so...
You know, we just wanna make sure we get the good service and get what we're getting now at a minimum and hopefully at a lower price.
But yeah, it would be worth it, nothing else, just looking around.
It helps the look.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense to just keep on pencil whipping something because we've always had it.
Yep.
You know, we gotta look around sometimes. Alright, so that's tabled to next meeting. Alright, next thing. Review possible draft of FY twenty-five budget calendar and budget instructions for all departments. Anticipated vote. Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you this evening, as we did last year, is a proposed budget calendar. It's in draft form, so we can, you know, look at this for another week or so and just trying to, you know, pencil down specific deadlines for departments, you know, actions that, that we need to take at, at, at a, at this particular period of time. I did have a chance to review this with the, the finance chair and with some of the committee members as well to try to go over this and to, you know, look at these dates. I included in this calendar this year the hope that, you know, capital planning will be, you know, in full swing. We have, as you know, you know, posted for capital planning. We updated the bylaw for capital planning, so, you know, it's our goal that, that we can get some interest from a couple residents to serve on the committee. You know, one of the challenges...
Looks good.
One of the challenges this year is that our annual town meeting, special town meeting, is in June. And our elections are in May. And typically at the elections, you know, the budget book that is printed by FinCom is made available at the election.
Yeah.
So, we're not gonna be able to do that per se and have that available at that particular time because of our special and the annual, it's been pushed back to June.
Well, it was always a courtesy of having it available for them during that time. But we can make it available immediately on, online.
Online.
And people, people sometimes prefer that, to just be able to download it and look at it. And we could have copies here available and...
Even at the ATM, we could have, you know?
Yeah.
So, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be much longer.
You can have it sitting at the post office, too.
Yeah.
Post offices, yeah. You know, we, we'll make a push to try to, you know, let people know that they're gonna be available. But they're, you know, I'm sure that there will be people at voting time saying, you know, where's the budget? You know, type of deal. And we'll, we'll have to, you know, notify them ahead of time saying that the, the budget will be available, you know, in a few weeks afterwards.
And again, you know, we did that to help give, you know, the schools some time. That's why we moved that, to come up with their budget numbers. It also wasn't really fair to have a meeting and have a newly, newly elected select board or whoever's on, and now they're representing these articles and things that are up there that they have no idea about because they weren't part of the town when they were brought up. So it gives whoever may step in or, you know, an opportunity to educate themselves on what's going on before they have to go to a town meeting, you know, and present it. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Farrar?
Yeah, so along with this, we, we can, you know, again, look at this next week. But along with this, I'd like the board to, to think and to start, you know, analyzing where they want to give direction to departments. Whether it be level services, level funded, a one percent, a two percent increase for budgetary numbers. I know that last year we did level services. That seemed to work out pretty well. We had a small increase due to inflation in the budget. You know, that, that only, you know, got us to about a little less than three percent increase overall.
But you can't run, you can't run a town on just level services all the time.
Right.
At some time, at some point, you gotta give them a little bit of a budget so they can do what they need to do. And we've been, we've asked them previous years to make cuts, cut their budget. And then recently, we've been level services. Right now, the town's doing fairly well, thanks to all the financial leadership and everything we have now. And I'm not saying, you know, spend away. Not, not even remotely, but we, we gotta give something so the departments can upgrade what they need to get. And we're not constantly fighting these battles to, to get every little penny, you know? So we'll have to look at it and meet with FinCom. And, you know, I'd like to know what FinCom feels about it, you know? And we'll actually look at what we can do. If we can maybe do a one percent, well, we have to do level services again. We just don't know. We'll have to really look at that part.
Level services is sort of vague 'cause I could say, well, I need one percent for level services. But someone else says, well, I need seven percent for level service because X, Y, and Z went up so much, so...
But that's their fuel expenses, they, they...
Could be anything, yeah.
They're still providing the same service, but they're saying, my budget went up seven percent. I'm still providing the same service, but I, my budget went up seven percent because fuel went up this much and this went up that much. And now I have to provide these inspections that are mandated by the state that we have to, you know, get somebody in here to do. So things change. It's always gonna happen and that's part of the budget process. But, you know, we really need to look at what we're gonna kinda stick 'em at, you know?
And if we, you know, if we, you know, our goal is to get capital planning and to get a capital budget, you know, so if we do have a capital budget, you know, that will be an increase within itself.
Yeah, they, because they're gonna have to put money away to the capital budget.
Right.
And that's important because we need to be planning for the future. We can't, can't always... Oh, this just broke down. You know, I'm honestly getting tired of, you know, Chief Lavoy coming in here and saying, my fire truck broke and this broke and I need new tires and, you know? I'd like him to just be able to go and buy the tires, you know, because he forecasted that. He knew he needed tires. You know? I don't know, Chief, what do you think?
Well, I mean, like you said, it's always a challenge, you know, that, you know, we have, you know, we've done remarkable things in the last two years, to be honest, with regard to equipment on the fire department. You know, we've had approximately, I estimated, a day after adding that, enough approval of the tanker installment, four hundred and fifty thousand, we put us at six hundred and fifty thousand for that project. We've had approximately two and a half million dollars come into the fire department between grants and municipal funding within the last just about two years. So, we, this will be the fifth vehicle that we've been able to replace. We're, we're heading down a good path. We still have one other vehicle that is aging, is a two thousand one, which is our next one to start the replacement process on. So, you know, usually these vehicles are twenty-five to thirty years, you know, depending on the maintenance and stuff. So, I mean, I'm confident, we, we have a lot of good equipment that we're, we're working on. We've been well-supported, so, you know, we try to come to the town as little as possible. Unfortunately, our, our equipment is significantly more expensive than the other, than the other departments for the most part. I mean, you know, it's just a fire truck nowadays, a class eight pumper is in anywhere from seven hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand dollars when it used to be five hundred thousand, you know?
The amount of cruises we could buy just for the price of one of your vehicles.
Fifty-five thousand as opposed to an eight hundred thousand dollar engine. So, you know, unfortunately, our stuff takes more time. So, you know, unfortunately, our stuff takes more time to plan and years in process to do that, but I think that we've, we've done well with that. I mean, all of these, you know, technically, we haven't had capital planning, as we know, but I've always tried to budget like we do, and, and we always try to use two, three, four years out. We plan for these events, and we put a little bit of money away at each time, and I think that's worked well, and it seems to be supported by the town, that method of doing things, because it's not a backbreaker right off the bat with a nine hundred thousand dollar ask. It's a hundred and fifty this year, two hundred and fifty the next, you know, to get us to that point, and it's been successful that way. So, you know, regardless of whether capital planning comes back around, that's, my intention is to continue to do that process that way.
Planning ahead. All right, thank you. Anything else, sir?
No. So, I mean, this is, again, we can put this on for next week's agenda, just to start the discussion, and hopefully we can get the notice out to the departments, you know, after next week's meeting.
Okay. Well, it's still a fluid document. If we need to make changes to it, we can adjust it. I don't see any issues with it right now, how it stands. I'm good with it. You're setting all the times and dates, timeframes, to get these things done, and I, I think it's a good, it's a good start.
Yeah, and if it shifts a little bit, it shifts a little bit, but it's a good framework.
That's why we hired you. Make it work. So, did you need a vote on that, no? Are you good? Yeah, you said a motion, approve.
Do you want a motion? Do you care?
Sure, if you want to prove the calendar, yeah, we can do that tonight. And then we could talk about the instructions, you know, next week or something.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the FY twenty-five proposed budget calendar.
I'll second that, all in favor.
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously, and the budget calendar is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good work. All right. Next thing, review and possible vote to sign contract between the town and Weston and Sampson for professional planning services regarding the Wrights Mill Master Plan, Master Recovery Plan, anticipated vote. Okay, this is for the EDA grant?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the RFP was a success. We had two competitive proposals. A committee was set up as pursuant to the RFP. The committee consisted of Tammy Martin, the town accountant, Carrie Schwartz, the tax collector, Don Schwischdack, the treasurer, Ed Londigan, the planning board member, and myself. And we met on November thirteenth at 1:00 P.M. to review the proposals. The committee went over both the technical proposals for the Wrights Mills Master Recovery Plan for, from Langen and Kolor and Weston and Sampson. The committee discussed the evaluation criteria for both companies and came to the unanimous decision that the Weston and Sampson was the company that was the high, the most highly advantageous in all categories. After the discussion of the technical proposals, the committee then went over cost proposals. Langen and Kolor submitted a cost proposal of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and Weston and Sampson submitted a cost proposal of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. The committee came to unanimous decision that Weston and Sampson should be recommended for awarding of the contract for the Wrights Mills Master Recovery Plan.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
No?
I mean, we went through their process, so...
Yeah, looks good. Good due diligence. Definitely want to get this going because, you know, we gotta be able to support anything that goes on there and, you know, try to get some, some financial revenue in here, you know? Do you have any questions?
No.
I have a question, that's okay.
We're actually not taking any questions right now, though, on that, from the public. I know you're the competitive bid, correct, from, with Kolor?
So, we were subcontracting, we're not the bidder.
It was a joint bid through Langen and Kolor.
Yeah. So, if they weren't recommended by the committee, then, you know, that's where it should have happened, is with the proposals. The proposal should have reflected that when the committee reviewed them, and that's how it should have been handled.
I just have some questions, that's all.
Well, you could, you could ask questions to the town administrator afterwards about the process, if you have questions about that. But as far as rehashing how the bids were done, they were already done.
And we don't have any knowledge of that either, I guess, right?
Yeah.
That would be, yeah, questions for them.
That was them. So, he'd be the one to talk with and discuss that, so, okay? All right. So, do a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Weston and Sampson.
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor.
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
And that has also been signed by town council and the town accountant.
Okay. This one hasn't.
It's on the previous page.
Oh, it is, okay.
Or the last page, sorry. Tammy's signature was on the last page.
I'd get Tammy to re-sign that top one, that's okay.
Yeah, you might want to, I guess.
Well, town council signed one. And Tammy signed the other one. So, why don't we just sign the one that town council signed? And then have Tammy sign this one, because trying to get town council's signature again is probably gonna cost us another thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We did that, on the next page. Oh, jeez. Lots of bills. So, next thing on the agenda are warrants in bills.
So, I'll make a, make a motion to pay the following warrants. Payroll number twenty-one, fifty-one thousand, fourteen dollars, ninety-eight cents. Payroll number twenty-two, fifteen hundred. Payroll number twenty-three, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Payroll number twenty-four, sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Vendor number twenty-four, hundred and sixty-one thousand, five dollars and forty-nine cents. Vendor number twenty-five, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and one cent. Vendor number twenty-six, eighty-three thousand, ninety-two dollars and nine cents.
I'll second that motion, all in favor.
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously, and the warrants are approved. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the following bills. Cooley Dickinson Medical Group, hundred and forty dollars. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Boiler Inspection Program, four hundred and fifty dollars. Northeast IT, thirty-three hundred, sixty-four dollars. Marlin Leasing, eleven hundred, seven dollars and twenty-three cents. MMA, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. KP Law, twenty-six hundred, fifteen dollars and seventy-six cents. Myrick and O'Connell, twelve thousand, thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Modern Pest, a hundred. Servu Locksmiths, thirteen dollars, ninety-six cents. Buffon Cleaning, three thousand, thirty-five dollars. Stericycle, hundred and twelve dollars and eighteen cents. True Value, twenty-three, thirty-four. National Grid, seven hundred, fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Crystal Rock, ten fifty-eight. Verizon, eight eighty-five. Comcast Business, hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. New System Associates, seventeen hundred, seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents. Warren Electrical Contractors, seven hundred and ninety dollars. SBA Structures, seventeen hundred, two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Amden Communications, fifteen hundred dollars. Pyren Technology, thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty cents. Maya, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Tecton Architects, nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
I'll second the motion, all in favor.
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously, and the bills are to be paid. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the minutes. Approve the minutes for October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, November second, two thousand and twenty-three, and November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So, moved.
I'll second that, all in favor.
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The minutes are approved. Town administrator report. Sir, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have some things to mention in my report tonight. Number one, I sent out an email right after special town meeting to all employees and all staff, all boards and commissions. I was very proud of the success that we had at town meeting. I thought it went very smoothly, very seamless, and I think we were able to accomplish, you know, all of our goals and objectives within the warrant. So, I really thank everybody for that, and it was a great team effort on everybody's part. We, we are rounding out the end of the year. As we round out the end of the year, we do have our tax classification hearing on Monday, December fourth, at seven fifteen, right in here in this room. We're going to be meeting with the Board of Assessors and the Select Board on the tax classification for setting the tax rate. We are in the process of doing some electrical work at the senior center to address a, a, a report that came out from our fire chief, to address emergency exit lighting signs, to address some of the wiring of an outside light, exterior lighting, and to address some switches and stuff within the senior center that were non-functional. We have Shepperson Electric down there. They are, they are doing some of the work, and they're in the process of making those updates and those changes. Tecton Architects have reached out. They would like a date to come and meet with the board to discuss where we are in the process with our public safety financial feasibility study. They are looking at possibly some dates in mid-December, early January. Totally up to the board's discretion. I'm not sure what, what dates work best. If you could check your calendars and send me an email, and I can run it by the staff at Tecton.
I'd probably say January for that one, because we got the holidays coming up, and there's gonna be a lot going on, and the last thing I want to do is bog down... Because that's gonna be something we're gonna talk a lot with them about, and I'd like to have a good meeting dedicated to that project. You know, I would say early January.
Sure.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we can do probably the second meeting in January.
Okay, we'll just focus that in on just that topic.
Yeah, I'll be focused in on, you know, the public safety complex, and...
So do we.
You know, a lot of questions, because then, then we can go through with them and talk with them and really discuss it, and just make sure the chiefs are here, and, you know... It'd be nice to have Jeremy here also, because Jeremy, he has a lot of knowledge of the, the area and the capabilities of what some heavy equipment could do. Maybe we can work to get things a little cheaper for that, so... But yeah, that would be a good time. You good with that?
Yeah, that's fine. I would say try and do a light agenda then.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't plan a lot of stuff on that.
Yeah.
Got it.
I did meet this week with the Board of Sewer Commissioners. We are in the process of compiling all of the applicants for the wastewater treatment plant operator mechanic. We are still accepting applications and resumes for that position. We, our first review for this position will be on Tuesday of next week at nine A.M. It's critical that we get the position filled for staffing concerns down there. You know, there's people that would like to have a day off, and so on and so forth, so it's critical for staffing and safety reasons that we, you know, we fill this as soon as we can. We have advertised it. It was in the Ware River News last week, it was in the Ware River News this week, it was in the Reminder this week. It's been on our website, it's posted on the bulletin board outside the clerk's office. So, we're trying to get as much outreach as possible and to draw anybody interested in that position. I've also been working with the Board of Health to fill the health agent, health inspector position that's critically needed. The board, I believe, now has the ability now to contract with the previous vendor who was with the town for some time, who's expressed interest. We had an individual that was going to do it out of Ludlow, but the individual was offered a position with the state and declined at the last minute. We had it filled, well, you know, a few weeks ago. So, I've been working with the Board of Health to get that filled so that we can get our inspections done, and it looks like that they're gonna be meeting on Tuesday to get that position filled with a, with a vendor who's qualified. Now that we've kind of wrapped up somewhat of all of our maintenance work now for the exterior of the building at the senior center, we're turning back to some maintenance issues at the police department to keep upkeep with some of the maintenance issues there. I know the chief had mentioned in the past that he wanted to get some of that, remediate some of the mold from coming into that other room off to the side where there's the dirt floor underneath, you know, so that he could at least store some items in there and not get mold and moldy in there.
The old exercise room?
Yeah, the exercise room. We're looking to try to put a plastic down on the, on the dirt to keep the condensation down that was recommended by an architect.
There's actually moisture control companies that specialize in that type of stuff, and it's a thick, thick plastic that they put down, and they wrap the walls, they do everything with it to keep that from going up there. The problem is, the river that's next to it. So, as long as that river's there, there's always gonna be moisture going in there because it's a cobblestone, you know, foundation.
So, I mean, that's, that's one of the issues we're looking at, addressing that with the chief, looking at some doors issues, some exterior doors that need to be maintained. I know that there was a, there was a discussion about one of the handicap doors on the side that, that needs to, needs some maintenance issues with it.
Needs crash bars on it?
Yeah.
But it also needs to be able to be secured so people can't just come in through that way. So, that's kind of complicated, because you need to have handicapped accessibility, so they're probably gonna have to put some sort of camera or something there so they can buzz somebody in during normal hours and open up that door. All right, Chief?
They, they have a Ring camera there now, so...
Doesn't work.
Oh, okay. We're there every day, so, I didn't know that.
So... Because we can't leave that door open.
No, no, no. So, there's, there's that issue, there's a whole complexity with that, that particular door. The front door, it was, you know, brought to the attention of me that Friends of Town Hall want to paint the, the front door of the, and restore the front door of the old town hall. They have funds that they would like to use to do that, and to do that possibly in the spring, and...
Not the police door, but the front door?
The real door of the town hall.
The real door, yeah, okay.
That they would like to do that sometime in the spring. So, you know, be working to see with them if the board would want to allow them to do that.
Be great to have the maintenance done, but they, they also have to understand that there is asbestos located in that area, so that would have to be mitigated for them to be able to do anything. And if they're gonna be scraping or chipping away any paint... And if they're going to be scraping or chipping away any paint.
I think it's just the actual door. I think they're going to take the door off. I don't know if he's going to do it on-site. I would imagine that maybe he would take it to his shop or do it right on the door. I don't know. I don't know how he would, you know, work that.
So they're not doing the door frame and?
No, this was just the, it's just the peeling that's, it's a laminate that's peeling off the door. It's not an actual mahogany door. It's just like a laminate door, and ultimately what will happen is the wood is going to rot underneath the laminate.
So what was he proposing for repairs then?
Some type of lacquer, some sealant of lacquer.
So.
But he's going to have to repair the peeling then, right?
The problem with that is because the historical aspect of the building, laminate doesn't go into historical aspect. That door might have to be restored if they're going to tamper with it or touch it to the historical part of it. So they would have to put a real wood door there to meet that compliance, because everything done on that building is supposed to be restored historically.
And it has to go to the state Historical Society.
Yeah, they have to approve that. So.
Did we do that for the windows?
No.
No, and that was one of the big problems. Because that was never done, because they were complaining, they were claiming that there's a historical aspect to the building, and it has to be preserved, but then they just stuck regular windows in there. They weren't historical in any aspect. They're, they're.
A lot of that building has not been restored to historical status. I mean, they got keyless entry, you know, door and off to the side. I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of like a hodgepodge of, you know, fixes here and there.
But the preservation committee should be the ones interested in restoring it to its historical, you know, aspect of it, you know, preserving it.
Can they just do a letter to us and just say what they're planning?
Okay, I'll have them do a letter.
And then we can hash it out. We have them come in, you know, sometime next year, right?
Sure.
I'm good with that, but we're going to have to find out what the state, because again, it's, we got to talk into about that, because when we're talking about, you know, what we're going to do with that building and options, the historical commission got very upset about that and was very concerned and was concerned about how things weren't being done in a historical manner and that they're supposed to be. And they reiterated that anything done to that building, it needs to be restored in a historical manner, and it has to be approved by the state, anything we do. So we can touch up paint here and there and do things, but if they're going to be paling apart a door or replacing parts of a door, that probably should fall under, especially the main door of the building. We should probably talk with the historical commission and say, okay, how is this supposed to be done? Because it'd be great to do it. But again, just because we've been doing the wrong thing in the past doesn't mean we need to continue doing the wrong thing. We need to fix it. So let's, let's get them involved in that too.
We will. The cable licensing agreement with Comcast has been ongoing with Jeff Blake, Cable Advisory. I know that Jeff and Travis had a phone conversation, I think, this week. And the town, we're going to have to schedule a public hearing very soon on this matter.
End in a month, right?
Right. And to.
You've got to remember the holidays are coming too, so.
We haven't seen, so we have, that's got to be done by the end of the year?
Yeah.
We haven't seen that at all, right?
Yeah, we have.
The Comcast contract, really?
Yeah, it's not really significant. Right now, it's all with Jeff Blake.
Right.
Okay.
And that's kind of holding things up right now for us to do anything, because we can't.
Right, so he, I believe Jeff and Travis talked on the phone this week, and they were talking about, you know, what type of ascertainments, you know, that the town would be interested in long-term and, you know, what the Cable Advisory was thinking of for help within the studio and capital needs and capital improvements. And they were going back and forth, and I believe that, you know, that now that information has been conveyed back to Comcast for a final review.
Yeah, it's kind of a balance, because people got to remember what we ask for more here just means it's going to reflect the cable bills for the people paying for it, because they're not going to do it out of the kindness of their heart and say, oh, yeah, we'll give you another twenty or thirty thousand dollars. No, that cost is going to get passed on to the users. And the users are going to have to pay for that increase.
This week, we had, as mentioned in the bills, we had the inspections of the boilers and the fire extinguishers at town hall and throughout all town buildings. Again, we're looking for members to serve on the finance committee, capital planning, Veterans Council. Those are posted on the website.
So backtrack, how did the boilers and fire extinguishers do?
The fire extinguishers all got new tags.
Okay, so they're all good?
They're all good. The boilers, I know the one at the wastewater treatment facility had no issues. We're waiting on final reports on for all.
So we don't have them?
Well, I don't think we have all the reports yet.
No, I said I only got one for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
And they just reported that what they asked them to do last year, they have done. Everything else was good.
And that was just this week, so I would imagine maybe by next week.
Yesterday.
Well, yeah, yesterday. And we'll get the reports soon on those.
Yeah, because we need to know if we got to make any repairs or anything budget for that, so.
I also have been in conversations with the Board of Health. They have quite a bit of problem properties, okay? And I've asked them to give me a spreadsheet of the problem properties. And they've issued corrective orders. They've issued letters. And it doesn't seem to be, you know, sinking into some of these problem properties owners. And so the next step in a process like this would be court action. And, you know, I know that the town, right now, you know, we cut our legal budget back this year because we didn't, we thought that it was going to be a little bit less. You know, so I'm real cautious as to incur more legal expenses until we settle some of our ongoing matters with council out there. You know, we may want to, you know, prioritize these lists. And I've asked the Board of Health to give us a list that we could go through, maybe in a future meeting, and to prioritize, you know, what actions the board may like to take on court actions against these properties.
Yeah, I'd like to know who the worst offenders are and what was already done. Because, just because it's the worst property and they only sent them one letter, you know, let's get a few more letters out there, get a time. But if they've been working on it and sending them letter, 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 and they're just being ignored, prioritize those, you know? Because it's not just, it's a public health issue. Because if there's rats and other things going on there, if there's feces and there's people, apartments being used and these buildings are in those conditions, we need to be able to make sure that they're being taken care of, you know? Next part is legal, but unfortunately, we don't have an infinite budget. It'd be nice.
So what's an example of some problems?
There's, you know, there's issues with junk in the back of people's yards, overgrowth. There's issues of, you know, hoarding. There's issues of, you know, feces that add up, you know, over the course of time. You know, there's issues of vermin. There's issues of some code violations to the actual exterior of the neighboring properties.
So the code violations, that would be the building commissioner, and she should be dinging them for fines.
Yeah, she can find them.
And, because she can, yeah, she can find them.
Usually, if we can do the building and the Board of Health, because Board of Health has a lot of authority, as you know, if we can combine those together to go at it at a solid approach, that's a very strong stance. It's better to come at it from a strong stance than, well, this person wrote a letter one week, and then two months later, this person writes another letter. But if we come at it at a strong approach, as a combined coordinated effort, you know, that's a very, you know, that shows strength.
Right. You know, and you can still do that. They should be working together. But there's no reason why the building commissioner isn't fighting people for building violations or building offenses, because it's safety. You know, it's not just health, but safety. If there's a problem where somebody can potentially get hurt, you know, it's her obligation to make sure that those conditions are being repaired. And if somebody shouldn't be living in that house because it's unsafe to live in, then, you know, make that call. You know, they shouldn't be there. Probably going to do themselves harm. Yeah, as far as the Board of Health, you know, it's a hard job, you know, it really is. And Joe, I understand. I see you guys in your meetings. It's a tough call. And it's hard times for people, and some people just don't want to clean their mess. And, you know, sometimes they need to be told to do it. And if that doesn't work, then you take the following action. But yeah, you know, prioritize them and let us know, and we'll see if we can free up some money somewhere, if we can give them some money to enforce those actions. Because you can't just keep on writing them letters and saying, please do this, please do this, because they're just going to keep on ignoring them until you start holding their feet to the fire and getting it done. And unfortunately, that's going to have to happen. Joe, do you have any comments on that?
Well, I can think of two properties right off the bat.
Don't mention them here.
One is actually condemned, and the other should be.
Are there people living in the condemned one?
No.
Okay. So. So it's a condemned house, and it just?
It's a problem.
We're just waiting for it to, is it demolished?
I'm not familiar with what he's, what specific property he's talking about, but, you know, there could be just a house that, you know, maybe has an absentee landlord. You know, maybe the person lives in another state or something that doesn't maintain the property.
That's one of the ones that I have the biggest peeve with, because don't be buying properties in our community and thinking you're just going to rent them out and let people, let the thing rot away and not take care of it. They're the ones that I want to bring to court. Haul them in here and get them into court, because I'm tired of that, you know? Somebody from, you know, we know which states, but other states. And, yeah. Buy up the cheap property, because we have cheaper property. Properties are cheaper, and you can rent them out. Yeah, all right, yeah. So prioritize them, Joe. Tell us which one's your worst and what you've done to notify them.
We have written repeatedly, sometimes once a month, letters.
Yeah.
By talking to a wall.
Yeah, well, especially if it's absentee landlords that you send them to, they don't care until you haul them into court and hold them to it. Then they seem to come up with the money to get these things fixed and repaired.
Always at the last minute.
It's always at the last minute, yeah. It takes a judge to say, well, I'm going to put you in jail if you don't do this and get it done. And then they, oh, yeah, I can throw fifty grand into that repair right now. Yeah, sure, no problem. And if they can't, we have other means. Take the house. Take the property. You know, we'll auction it and give it to somebody that can take care of it. Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir.
Do you have anything?
No.
Good job. Hardworking. All right. So new business. Do we have any new business? Do you have any new business?
No, I don't.
Got no new business. Old business?
Oh, Jim, you have an update with the grid screw?
Oh, yes, yep. So the grid screw is being installed right now at the sewer plant.
Wow, very good.
Yeah, started the end of last week, beginning of this week. And they are down there working away and installing it. And hopefully, it should be up and running, you know, within another week or two.
You're going to go christen it with a bottle of champagne? Take them long enough, we should.
Well, that's only half of the project, because we got to look at the other half of that now too.
That's our rack, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, maybe we can get a municipal grant for that. All right, did you have anything else?
No.
There was something on my mind, though. Oh, the lights out here? What are we doing with those?
So now that we have money in, from the special, I've asked for quotes. I'm waiting on quotes to come back.
All right, I got that, and then? Having the lines painted for the fire line, fire lane? Jeremy's going to jump on that?
I'm not, I'll check, I'll circle back around with Jeremy.
Yeah, if you could follow up with him on that one. I know he wants to be out there playing as an excavator and having fun with that thing now, but if we can get some lines painted, that would be great. And then.
Okay, so another thing, I guess, old business, Lucy Stone Park. The signs came in. They're going to have signs all throughout the park. Those came in. In fact, they did a little video of it on.
Oh, did they?
Posted it, yeah. The unboxing.
Nice.
So depending on the weather, Jeremy will try and get the signs in soon or it'll be the spring then, if it's not, you know, in the next week maybe.
Okay.
Just because he's got, you know, he's got to do footings for the poles and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, they look good. You can see them on Facebook.
There you go. All right. They fixed the stairs over at the sewer department?
Yep.
So that's done, right?
Yep. One set, one set, the worst set.
Okay. And then? The extra help for Board of Health?
We're going to, we're, we were going to have a meeting this week, but we had an individual who was out sick. We rescheduled it for early next week. We're hopeful that we can get somebody internally to cover some additional hours. You know, there was an expressed interest internally that somebody would like to step up and do some additional hours on a temporary basis, you know, that's feasible. We can do that.
Very good. And I think that's about it. I don't think we have anything else tracking as far as passing. We're pretty much catching up on everything, which is great. Well, all right. So correspondence. We have Mass DOT working on the bridges on I-90 that goes through our town boundaries. So they sent a message to us letting us know that they would be working in several communities, Warren, Brimfield, Palmer, and Wilberham, involving eleven bridges on I-90. And.
This is kind of strange. I mean, they already have been working on them, right?
Yeah, they've been working on them for a while. And they finally sent us a letter in November, November first. They sent it out.
You've noticed the past eight months, we've been working on bridges.
We've done all the repairs, but just so you know, we're gonna do that after the fact, so, yeah. They've been working on the bridges, really doesn't affect the highway traffic, and they've been keeping out of the roads, so it really hasn't been an issue.
Yeah.
So. But it's good to see them doing the bridges, be nice to see if we can get the bridge done in the center of town for the train tracks. So next correspondence is the town clerk letter to Representative Todd Smoller about Stephen Perkins.
It's our home rule petition for the special.
Okay. Yep. So he's just letting everybody know that we voted yes on that, and if he can move forward with it, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Be nice to keep him for a little longer. Good to have somebody that has that knowledge and if we can keep him around, teach the younger guys.
I spoke to Jim earlier on that, we're hoping that they can expedite the process, because, you know, last time we did this years ago, it took over almost a year and a half. So if it takes that long this time.
Government runs slow.
Yeah, we're gonna hope for a little bit of expedited process on this one.
All right. And we, we had another correspondence, I received a couple emails from a resident about one of the streetlights. And just letting us know that the streetlight was out. I notified Mr. Farrar of the issue. The next day, the streetlight was being repaired. So that was actually pretty impressive, I'm very happy with this contractor because the old one, we would've had to send it to California and they would've had to sign it out to somebody and it just like, it took months to get anything fixed. It was very impressive to see, and the guy sent photos that, yep, fixing it, streetlights fixed. It was the next day. Okay. And he had to replace a bulb and some electronics inside the head of the unit, because it's LED, but I got confirmation from the resident, yes, it does work, and he was very happy with that. So that was a good one, we're gonna have to keep this contractor around. Did a good job. Did you have any correspondence, sir?
No.
Okay. Comments and concerns, do you have any comments and concerns?
Comments, the wrench is about, right?
He is, he is getting about, he's wandering.
And we have the tree lighting tomorrow.
No.
It's been postponed.
Postponed.
Oh.
Saturday, four.
Saturday.
Due to the weather.
Oh, it's gonna rain tomorrow.
Yeah. There's a fifty percent chance that it might rain, and they're worried about it.
Forty-seven, four to seven.
Four to seven. So it's not four thirty anymore.
It's four.
It was four to seven tomorrow, too.
Was it?
Yeah, four to seven, they just moved it to Saturday, to the, Saturday was the rain date for it. Unfortunately, it looks like fifty percent rain directly during the hour they were going to do it, so they decided to move it, put that announcement out this morning, so.
So everybody knows the tree lighting is on Saturday now and not Friday. No.
Tomorrow, yeah, right, tomorrow.
But that's also the same day as Westbrook Field, right?
No, Westbrook Field's a Sunday.
It is a Sunday?
They picked Sat-, they put, they picked Friday because they didn't wanna interfere. If they had to do a rain date, they didn't wanna have it on Sunday, the same time as Westbrook Field. So they picked the rain date of Saturday, just in case, they didn't interfere with Westbrook Field's.
Okay.
Like Christmas.
Very good.
Which is gonna rain on Sunday.
Yeah.
Anyway.
All right, so everybody knows that the tree lighting's been moved. And... If we can have Jeremy have his guys go around and help out with the trash that's being dumped all over our roads now, because unfortunately, on Douglas Road, somebody dumped a chair out, one of those like recliner chairs, dumped it on the side of the road, and it's in Town of Warren. And somebody dumped some trash out by the train tracks before the lights in West Warren on sixty-seven. So tis the season, people are dumping trash again. And I hope it's not anybody from our community, and I hope it's not people coming into our community doing this, because we have a lot of good people that work very hard to keep their properties clean and maintained and Highway Department works very hard to do that too. And it's upsetting to see, right before the holidays, people just going out there dumping trash on our roads. And it's quite disgusting, take it to the dump, you know, bring it to the dump, and it's only a few dollars to get rid of it.
And Highway doesn't have a budget to pick up trash, and it's come over their general expense.
Right, we gotta pay to get rid of it, which costs everybody else, you know? And we can't just leave it there, because it's trash. You know, we gotta pick it up, so. Be an adult, clean up after yourselves, don't dump your trash into our community, and if you don't want furniture, find another way of getting rid of it. Just don't dump it on the side of the road, be responsible.
Salvation Army, goodwill.
They're closing all the Salvation Armies. They, this, they just closed the one in Spencer, right?
Yeah, it's been closed for a little while, six months maybe.
That was only the real big one that was around for a long time, and I don't even know where there is another one.
In Springfield on Route twenty.
At Springfield.
Yeah.
A big city.
Boston Road, yeah.
And then there's one also in Worcester.
Yes, you gotta travel with your junk.
You gotta go to, go to the cities to drop off your junk. But yeah, you know, don't just dump it out there, and unfortunately, you know, and I'll call them out for this, you know, hunters, I love hunters, they're, I hunt too, I have no problem with the sport, I have no problem going out there and taking a dare properly. But that doesn't mean that's a spot for you to clean out your truck either, because they've been going out in the woods and dumping beer bottles and everything else right where they left their truck parked, and that's just not appropriate. It's, it's not good representation of the sport and, you know, other hunters that go in the area, because people are gonna stop throwing out signs to not hunt on their property if you're dumping trash on their property. So take your junk with you, take your beer bottles with you, and don't just drop them there on the side of the road in a big pile where you had your truck parked. Okay, again, we work hard to keep our communities clean, don't come in here and trash our communities. And I know it's probably, it's probably not hunters from our town, because our people take care of the town, but from other areas that come into Warren to hunt, because we have a good population here, pick up your trash.
I think beer bottles and hunting don't seem like good.
No, they don't, no, they don't. Hey, I didn't say they were drinking them there, because I don't know if that's true. I'm just saying, a majority of the trash that's being dumped there are McDonald's stuff that I see and beer bottles and.
Nips.
Nips.
All over the place.
Yep. So again, we're trying to clean up our community, make it nice, pick up your trash, you know? In the center of our town, if you walk through our center of town, we have brand new trash cans there. Put them in the trash can. We should not go around the gazebo and find wine bottles and nips all around the gazebo when there's a trash can right next to the gazebo. Throw them in the trash. Because we'll put some big old bright spotlights right there, so people aren't gonna be able to do that anymore. Anyway. Yeah, I have nothing else for comments and concerns, and you're good, right?
Yeah, I'm good.
Did you have anything, sir? Anybody from the public app, Mr. Condrath?
Okay. Just a reminder for people, right behind this municipal building, there are two clothing boxes. If you put it in there, it's gonna be recycled. And provided, if you have single socks, and we all know about the washers that eat socks, you can just throw a single sock in there. It's there for us.
And it actually helps the town, because the town actually gets, per pound.
Seven cents.
Seven cents per pound. So if you have two tons of old laundry sitting at your house that you wanna get rid of, bring it in there, dump it in there, because it will help the town, because it gives us more revenue for every pound.
And just think, if you got those old blankets, old wool blankets that have holes in them, roll them up, throw them in.
So thank you for bringing that up, because I actually had somebody come up to me and ask me if we can get rid of the Salvation Army box out from the dump and have these ones, where the town's getting something back and it goes back to the community, put there, because they would be more likely to put them, put it there at the dump and bring old clothes there and throw them in there, because there is no Salvation Army in our communities. They, they're not around anymore, you know? You have to go to the cities, like we just talked about, for that, and they still charge people, they sell that stuff. Where here, you know, the stuff that we're using, it goes back into textiles.
Well, not only that, so you got a pair of pants that have holes in the knees. I've seen pants like that for sale at the store for sixty-five bucks. That's crazy. And yet people buy them.
People will, but that would be my recommendation, because the board of health controls the dump. And if the board of health wants to get rid of the Salvation Army box, which really isn't helping our community in any way, and we can put one of these boxes in there, and that would help the town generate revenue too. And it costs nothing for anybody to throw the stuff away, it's free to throw clothes and stuff in there. It's just, it goes back to your community directly, because we get money back from it, so. So it actually helps us. Anything else, Mr. Condrath? No? Anybody else have any comments or concerns? Anything? Right? Be quiet tonight. All right. Did you have anything, sir?
I didn't, I stopped by to read the postings, and I saw that there was a meeting going on, so I thought I'd stop in and see how it goes.
Well, welcome to the meeting, you know? Nice to have you, feel free to stop by anytime we have a meeting.
Thank you.
Did you have anything to say, anything concerns with the community, how's everything running?
No, I've been a lot of concerned with the community, but I'm not really in the mood to hash it out, so. Maybe at the next meeting.
All right.
And if you come to the board of health, we do not have Ashman.
Again, if you ever wanna talk with us offline too, we're all available too, and Mr. Farrar is always available, if you have comments or concerns.
I know where your office is, yes. He's always welcoming, thank you.
He is. How's he doing?
Sounds great, sounds like he's on time for things.
All right. Good job. All right, anybody from Zoom have any comments and concerns? Going once, going twice, is there even anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, a couple of people, but, a couple, they're just quiet.
All right. So no comments and concerns. Next meeting is December fourth, two thousand twenty-three. That's a tax classification meeting, and that is at seven fifteen PM. And that's to discuss next year's tax rate and basically exemptions and stuff like that, so. If you're interested in that stuff, I welcome you to attend or see us on Zoom. We'd love to see you and hear from you, but that will be discussed on December fourth. And next meeting, for regular meeting for the board of selectmen, is December seventh, and that is at six PM, and that is Thursday as usual. So that's December seventh at six PM, and that's a Thursday.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richard Hacker, aye.
David Dufray, aye, we are adjourned.